Call the city council meeting to order, roll call please.
Alderman Kedala.
Here.
Alderman Knight.
Here.
Alderman Cole.
Here.
Alderman Lewatton.
Here.
Alderman Felice.
Here.
Alderman Shockey.
Here.
Alderman Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Winger.
Here.
Mayor Johnson.
Here. Coram being present, would you stay on and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of December 20th, 2007? Is there a second? Any comments, corrections, additions? Alderman Lewatton?
Section five, it says Alderman Wesley question the Klein-Thorpe Legal Services on page 12 where he was questioning why the city was paying for the city manager's lawyer to inspect his contract. I'd like to say that that was Alderman Felice who did that.
I believe that's correct. We'll make that change. All in favor to approve as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bills, Alderman Wesley?
I'll make the motion, pay the bills, $1,304,714.39.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the question? Roll call.
Alderman Cole.
Yes.
Alderman Felice.
Yes.
Alderman Knight.
Yes.
Alderman Kedala.
Yes.
Alderman Shockey.
Yes.
Alderman Winger.
Yes.
Alderman Wesley.
Yes.
That passes. Do any citizens wish to address the city council this evening? If so, if you go to the podium and give us your name and address, starting with Mr.
Yeah, my name is Mirko Petrovich. I live at 254 North Ash in Wooddale, Illinois. I'm speaking in reference to 365 East Irving Park Road. I have been doing some research and today I came to the city and I have filed appeal and I'm appealing the, under the section 10801, scope of appeal. We are appealing the decisions, the rulings, under section indicated, which are a section 10.1, I'm sorry, I had to put the glasses on. We are appealing under section 10, 11-0, section 10, 11-01, section 10, 21-02, section 10, 20-04, section 10, 11-04, section 10, 23-04, section 10, 21-04, section 10, 23-05, section 10, 23-06, section 10, 23-07, section 10, 11-02, and section 10, 27-01, section 10, 27-02, and section 10, 27-03. Now, I'm not sure if it's necessary to read all these sections from the code book of City of Wooddale. I have them all here and I don't feel it's necessary to go through them unless Mr. Mayor or somebody feel that it's necessary for me to indicate which.
No, it's not necessary to read the sections and I'll interchange your comments, Mr. Boyan's comments, then I'll ask the city attorney to respond. We won't be doing, I don't believe, the appeal this evening. So go ahead with your presentation, then I'll have Mr. Boyan's presentation and then I'll recognize the city attorney.
Okay, under section 1010 is specified when the use is not specially designated as a permitted use with any given zoning district, such a use is expressly prohibited. Motorcycles.
Just to clarify, let me go to the city attorney first because we won't be hearing the appeal tonight. We got, we just received notice of it and the city attorney will tell us, have to do some research and tell us what the procedure is from here. So you're probably better off if you don't present your case at this point because I'm not sure if it's heard by this board or the building code board or review or... And it is anticipated we will not be going forward with Eagle's Claw tonight until your appeal is resolved. We will be requesting from the chairman a motion to table and that ordinance will not be adopted tonight until we resolve the appeal issue.
Okay, I think that's good enough for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Boyan?
I withdraw my request to speak.
Very good. Ms. Dixon?
The city has been, has been tendered two letters from Mr. Petrovich. The first letter sought to appeal the decision of the city council that was expected to be made tonight, or actually the first was to appeal a decision of the city council that was made in December. The second, I'm advised that you are now seeking to appeal the decision of the zoning administrator who determined that the special use was proper in the first place. As to an appeal of the city council decision, I believe staff has advised you, Mr. Petrovich, that the city council decision first has not been formally made. It was expected and on the agenda to be made tonight. Any appeal of that decision would be only appropriate after the city council made the final decision and not prior to that. And the appeal that's, that has been filed relative to the decision of the zoning administrator is something that our office is looking into as to whether it's appropriate or not. So it is our recommendation, while we determine whether your appeal is even appropriate to have been made, that we would recommend to the city council that the decision on the special use for Eagle's Claw be tabled until the next city council meeting so that we can address your appeal that was, I think, filed just yesterday as to whether it's appropriate and so that we can give legal advice to the city council.
Yes, Mr. Petrovich, but you do need to go back to the platform, please.
Okay, just not to get confused, we are appealing under section 10801, scope of appeal, and that is in the city code of City of Wooddale. Thank you.
Mr. Petrovich, we will be in touch with you relative to the appeal papers that you have filed prior to the next city council meeting. We'll be discussing that with you, okay? Thank you.
Sorry, Mr. Boyan, you need to go to the podium, please.
Good evening. My name is Chuck Boyan and I'm here representing Eagle's Claw Cycles. I'm a little confused, as I'm sure some of you are, and I would just like to know what it is exactly that is being appealed and what kind of a timeframe we may be looking at. We have already, excuse me, invested a great deal of money and time into this effort based on the last ruling of the city council. So before we do any more, I would like at least a little bit of guidance, if I can get that, please.
Ms. Dixon?
Yes, I should have addressed you as well. The, it's my understanding that the first appeal that had been filed by Mr. Petrovich was relative to the city council action that was taken in December relative to your special use request. That decision of the city council was to direct the attorney to draft the appropriate ordinance, which we have done, and that was on the agenda for this evening. That appeal, in our opinion, as we had advised staff, who I believe advised Mr. Petrovich, the first appeal would have been inappropriate because the appeal was of a decision that wasn't final. And if there is an appeal of a city council decision, the appropriate venue for that is the court system and not the city council or any, any of its advisory bodies. It's my understanding that a new appeal has been filed that questions the decision of the zoning administrator to place this matter before the zoning board of appeals, and I think I've stated that correctly. Mr. Clicker's here as well and could be, could discuss that issue as well. That is an issue that raises a question as to whether that's an appropriate question for appeal under our city code. Because we need to answer that question, what we are asking the council to do tonight is to table the matter to the next city council meeting. And prior to that next city council meeting, I will talk with Mr. Petrovich and with you to let you know what our advice, we'll be talking to the city council about what our advice will be, to let you know better what a timeline could be. I can't answer that for you tonight. But you, if the city council agrees to table this ordinance, it would be tabled to the next city council meeting.
Alderman Wesley?
Mr. Mayor, since there's an appeal out here now and they have been working on that building already, part of tabling it, I would strongly suggest that we put a stop work order on that building until we get this all cleared up because it ain't fair for him to put out the money and then, you know. So I think we should also put a stop work order on that building right now.
Mr. Boyan?
Thank you. The work that has been being done in the building since the last city council meeting has basically been painting and cleaning. We did take down one wall that had no electrical or anything else in it so that we could do some painting. There's no construction going on, there's no building permit. We're really at a point where we're just painting walls right now. Actually, the money's already been spent. We've already purchased materials, we've been waiting on the building permit. So, I mean, we've already spent $12,000 in building materials for this based on the last city council meeting.
Alderman Wesley, did you have?
No, I...
Counsel without objection, so we can dispose of this matter and move on to other things. I'll move down to item 10, committee reports, planning, zoning, and building. Alderman Shockey, do you have a motion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's only one item, an ordinance approving a request to permit a special use for the operation of a motorcycle sales and service store in the B2 zoning district located at 365 East Irving Park Road, and I have been instructed to make a motion to table this issue until our next city council meeting.
Is there a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
I think we're gonna need a roll call on that one.
Alderman Cole? Alderman Felice?
No.
Alderman Knight?
Excuse me, just to clarify, the motion is to table?
Correct.
Yes.
Alderman Kedala?
No.
Alderman Shockey?
No.
Alderman Winger?
No.
Alderman Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Lewatton?
No.
Just advise that this is a procedure that is provided for in our city code, though rarely used, and if we ignore the city code, certainly you are exposing the city to litigation. So if that is your intent, I'll announce the vote, but if you want to reconsider your vote, knowing that you are cutting short due process of law, that is your choice. You have the recommendation of the city attorney. I don't know if she wants to expand on it further. Alderman Winger?
But isn't the appeal a supposed appeal based on what the petitioner or the resident may do? And wouldn't we just want to continue our course of business as it is? Or are we holding back based on the current notice that they've put forward?
Ms. Dixon?
The recommendation that I have made to the council, that the council table, is to allow us to complete our legal analysis as to whether the appeal that was filed is correct and should be given credence under your zoning code. If it is a proper appeal of a decision of the zoning administrator, your code provides that you should issue no permit or take no action until the appeal is resolved. So our decision has to be, and we have to advise you as to whether that's a proper appeal. If it is a proper appeal, then I, in our opinion, it would not be proper to go forward tonight. If it's not a proper appeal, there's no issue and you can. But until we resolve that issue, it was our decision to recommend tabling because we would hate to have, to the extent the vote is favorable and the petitioner gets a special use, to have to go back and say that the proper, that appeal is proper and the special use might not be in effect would have been inappropriate. So we thought it would, it was a better recommendation to the council legally to table it, to allow us to complete the legal analysis.
Okay, thank you. I do understand now, and, Mr. Mayor, if I may follow up, that on the draft that we did do, I did have some questions or comment on some modification that may be needed. Is it appropriate to do that now or are you suggesting to wait on that as well?
Ms. Dixon?
Well, my suggestion would be to wait. If you have any comments, I would invite any members of the council. If there were any comments made on the draft that we presented, certainly you can take those up with me so that we provide the draft that is most in keeping with what the council wants. And, and to have a full discussion on it, we should wait until the next council meeting, if that is the pleasure of the board, unless the board chooses to go forward tonight.
Thank you.
Alderman Lewatton?
I have in front of me, that was given to the, to the council this evening, a letter by Ross Klinker, and I'll read what he, what he's written. "In conclusion, I believe Mr. Petrovich is incorrect in his interpretation of the zoning code, and I have informed Mr. Petrovich of this belief. In fact, I have inquired," this is the important point, "I have inquired of the city attorney," and it says, it speaks of the attorney as singular, but it refers to them in the plural, so I assume that's you and Pat, "that both of you have concurred with my belief that Mr. Petrovich is incorrect in his interpretation of the zoning code. So therefore, how can you come to a conclusion that contradicts your own conclusion? And not only that, but if Mr. Petrovich is going to sue the city to, to reverse the decision, the decision has to be made. So this only speeds up his counteraction."
Ms. Dixon?
To be, if you look at the letter that's attached, the letter that's attached by Mr. Petrovich is a letter wherein he seeks to appeal the decision of the city council. When we were in receipt of this letter, I personally spoke with Mr. Clicker. Mr. Clicker asked me what my opinion was as to whether there was an appeal that could be made as a result of the city council action that was taken in December. At the city council meeting of December, the decision of the city council at that time was to direct the city attorney to draft the appropriate ordinance with conditions to grant the special use. That was not a final action of the city council. Because it wasn't a final action of the city council, it's not an appropriate appeal. There's nothing to appeal yet because there's no final action. And secondly, to the extent there was final action of the city council, the appropriate appeal is to the court system and not to any other body of the city. So when, when Mr. Clicker wrote his initial memo, all of that is true. My legal opinion that I rendered to Mr. Clicker was that there was no appropriate appeal because the action wasn't final, and if the action was final, the appropriate method of appeal was to the court system. So his letter is true and I have not changed my position on that. What has changed is that it is my understanding from talking with Mr. Clicker yesterday that the appeal is now not over the city council action, but over, over an interpretation of the zoning code made by your staff, that this is an appropriate special use. And that's a different question.
Let's ask Mr. Klinker to explain it from his perspective.
Mr. Mayor? I would advise Mr. Clicker not to...
Mr. Mayor?
We have one attorney at this city. Let me go to Alderman Wesley.
As of right now, before, I mean, anything else to discuss on this, I'll make a motion on the floor that we table this until we get a legal opinion on this as of right now because we could be possibly litigation.
We have existing motion to table on the floor, which I have not announced the result on yet. That is still pending. I inquired of the city council whether anyone wants to change their vote and allow the legal process to take its course. Alderman Felice?
So basically, if we table tonight, we'll find out in two weeks.
Before that.
Before that. Well, that's the next city council meetings in two weeks.
That would be the next time you could take action.
We could take appropriate, okay.
So I'll inquire again unless there's any other questions. Alderman Cole's?
I've got one question. On Zone 10801, how old is it? How old is that ordinance? And now if that ordinance goes back 15, 20 years ago, things have changed and that ordinance might be obsolete.
Well, the, the ordinance still is, is an ordinance of the City of Wooddale, so despite the fact that it might be many, many years old, it is still an ordinance that's on the books.
We found, we found that out, that we had ordinances, we didn't have ordinance to take care of what's coming on, on the agendas now because the ordinance that we have have never been updated. So, I mean, that's, this is something that you've got to figure out. All right?
So I would remind you that each of us took an oath to uphold the laws of the State of Illinois and the City of Wooddale, whether we've updated them or not. So, Alderman Shockey?
I'd like to change my vote from no to yes so that the legal process can be followed up by our city attorney.
I'll change mine.
Me too.
Maybe it'd be simpler if we just called the roll again at this point. Is that permissible?
You never announced the vote, so if you would like to recall the...
To clarify the vote. We'll ask the clerk to recall the roll, please. This is on a motion to table.
Alderman Cole's?
Yes.
Alderman Felice?
Yes.
Alderman Knight?
Yes.
Alderman Kedala?
Yes.
Alderman Shockey?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Lewatton?
Yes.
All right, that matter is tabled to the first Thursday in February.
And thank you. That's the end of my report, Mr. Mayor.
That, Alderman Cole's?
It's second council meeting in January, not February.
I stand corrected, yes. In two weeks, yes. Anyone else wish to address the city council this evening? Hearing none, I do not have any written communiquees. It brings us to mayor's report and council. You should have received in your packet, we have a guest before us this evening, Mr. Gregory Ford of the Par Group, to explain us one of the possibilities of hiring a new professional manager. Mr. Ford, would you take the podium, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Alderman Wesley?
Can I ask you to go out of sync and try to take the item under that, the city manager report, because we do have staff present.
Yes, Mr. Ford, if you would wait for a minute.
Sure.
Also, under my report, I had one additional item, which I just passed to Alderman Winger, which is the Green Initiative, which is part of the Clean Air Counts campaign, which if we pass that by our meeting on February 7th, as I understand it, everyone in the City of Wooddale gets a free fluorescent light bulb as part of the Clean Air Counts campaign. So I would ask her to add that to her committee agenda and also to a city council committee agenda so we can get it done by February 7th, if possible.
I certainly will, thank you.
Okay. And that brings us to Mr. Manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have one communiquee, a letter from the Wooddale Community Church commending some of our city personnel. It says, "Dear Mr. Williams, on Thursday, December 13th, city services personnel assisted HSBC Corporation, that used to be Household Finance in Wooddale, to deliver and package food for the Wooddale Food Pantry. We send our thanks to the city for providing the service. HSBC had collect, collected food to donate to the pantry. The food pantry serves 12 to 20 Wooddale struggling families each month and depends upon donations to help meet their needs. Additionally, we deliver food and gifts to disadvantaged schoolchildren and their families at Thanksgiving, Christmas, and Easter. Your willingness to assist in this ministry is most appreciated gratefully to Wooddale Community Church Food Pantry." Second item, I'd like to introduce Roger Noick, Director of Community Development. He has some departmental awards.
Mr. Noick?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Manager Williams. And good evening, everyone, and I wanted to thank you for the opportunity to share in a celebration of achievement. It isn't often that we applaud, it isn't often enough that we applaud employees for a job well done, and I think that all of us can enjoy sharing our enthusiasm and delight with people who have won awards, achieved a milestone, or have been recognized for outstanding work. This special accomplishment is an occasion for congratulations. Tonight, we are present to recognize four community development department staff members that have achieved success in attaining certifications sponsored by the International Code Council. These being John Forrest, our building administrator, John Philander, our senior building inspector, Ross Klinker, our community and economic development assistant, and Joe Johnson, our code enforcement supervisor. The, the City of Wooddale can be proud to support educational endeavors and opportunities for all of our employees. We support the effort to provide learning experiences that encourage individuals to strive for excellence, reach their personal goals, and also pursue their dreams. Often times, the road to success in any field or discipline is punctuated by self-sacrifice, dedication, and perseverance. At this time, I would like to call Mr. Johnson and Mr. Clicker up. Each one of these individuals has achieved the classifications, two classifications from the International Code Council. I will start with Mr. Johnson, who is our code enforcement supervisor. Recently, Joe has received the certification for property maintenance and housing inspector and also for zoning inspector. Congratulations, Joe. And Ross has also received two certifications, one as a permit technician and the other as a zoning inspector. Congratulations, Ross. Thank you. Before I introduce the next two gentlemen, I would like to, I just have a brief statement in accord with their accomplishment. Long hours and sometimes years of study, specialty training, and preparation are prerequisites to successfully secure the coveted designation of CBO, or Certified Building Official. Many people agree that it is the highest level of accomplishment in professional code enforcement. Just an item of note, too, is that the final examination for the CBO designation involves difficult questions, hypothetical situations and scenarios, all designed to test the individual's knowledge and expertise in the areas of, the legal aspects of code enforcement and building codes. codes, coupled with the legal responsibilities of the building administrator. Further, it also questions department management, and finally, advanced plan review. At this time, I would like to have both John Forrest and John Philander step up here, please. John Forrest, Certified Building Official. Mr. John Philander, Certified Building Official. Just a sidebar note here, too, is that according to my information, Wooddale is the only city in the West to have three certified building officials on staff in the same department. Thank you, gentlemen. I wish to congratulate all of you on your recent successes and achievements in personal certification and education. Please continue your outstanding work, and just to mention, too, we're all proud of your accomplishments. Finally, I just wanted to express my gratitude to the mayor, the city manager, and the city council for your continued support, and thank you once again.
Thank you, gentlemen, well done. Does that conclude your report, Mr. Manager? That concludes my report. Brings us back to mayor's report. Mr. Ford of the PAR Group, would you do your presentation at this time, please? And gentlemen, if you need to move on to other family matters, you're lucky to be excused.
And after hearing about the great staff, I promised not to try to recruit any of them to another local municipality. That is one of the promises we do make in our contract, is not to do that sort of thing. It's not a great way to win friends and influence people with our clients. Thank you, Mayor, and Alderman, for giving us the opportunity to make a proposal to you to do the recruitment for a city man...